Good evening, I'm John Rowe, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, and I call the Thursday, excuse me, Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And in accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus, the executive order that Governor Northam signed on March 12, 2020, Executive Order Number 51, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council, and due to the ongoing pandemic which is continuing in the United States, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and in the city of Portsmouth, this call meeting of the City Council is being, or this regular meeting of the Portsmouth City Council, is being held by video conference today, the 24th of November, without a quorum of City Council members present in the City Council chamber. And we're doing this in order to reduce the likely spread of the COVID-19 virus. And this is in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each City Council member is participating in this meeting from their home or some other remote location, and I am in the City Council chamber. Madam Clerk, will you, I'm calling the meeting to order, and will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Semus.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. Our first item is the consideration of minutes, and we have the minutes of a call meeting of November 10, 2020, the minutes of a record meeting of November 10, 2020, and the minutes of a call meeting of November 16, 2020. We'll consider all three sets with one motion is so that we can put this matter before us for our consideration. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we're ready for the question. This vote, like all votes tonight, will be an oral roll call vote. And when your name is called, if you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye; if you're opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Ms. Semus.
Aye.
Mayor Rowe.
Aye. Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers?
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limited up to three minutes to speak. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in obliterant, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of the City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Our next item is a series of public hearings, Item 20-296. And our first is the, a public hearing, Item, Agenda Item SNC 2002. And for all of our public hearings this evening, we'll follow the protocol that will give the applicant 10 minutes to explain her or his application. Then I'll ask the city manager if he or our director of planning has any comments. Then I'll open the public hearing, and at the end of the public hearing, I'll close it, and we'll consider the matter for either adoption or approval by motion and vote. With that, Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of our first public hearing,
Yes, sir. West Norfolk ordinance granted the request of Trent Kelly of Lineage Logistics for a permanent street name change for a 400-foot dead-end portion of Chemical Way from its current designation to the name Lineage Way in support of the planned Lineage Logistics facility at 3200 Chemical Way. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as heavy industrial. The property is public right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. Planning Commission recommends approval. And Mayor, this item is a one-reading item, so I will also read the ordinance to be considered. And that would be ordinance to change the name of an approximately 400-foot section of Chemical Way to Lineage Way.
Thank you, ma'am. And I understand that Trent Kelly, the applicant, well, is here in this meeting. And Mr. Kelly, you have 10 minutes to explain your application.
Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council, my name is Larry Longman with Victory Unlimited Construction, and I'm actually here to represent Mr. Trent Kelly of Lineage Logistics.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I'll give my address for the record, 6831 East 32nd Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46226. So, we are under construction at the present time for the new facility off of Chemical Way. The facility was a development originally, the brainchild of Marathon Development, and Lineage purchased the site in 2019, and since then has been fine-tuning their logistics strategy. And as a result of that, in May of 2020, we really got underway in earnest with the project. And one of the things that had initially come up with the owner was the notion of where exactly they would have a driveway entrance. It was, at one point in time, it was believed that there would be a driveway off of West Norfolk Road. The right-of-way of this particular parcel really wasn't determined until it was bifurcated between Marathon Development and Lineage. And as a result of that bifurcation, the right-of-way that serves as the primary access point for Lineage is this stretch of Chemical Way that you can see on the screen right now, highlighted in yellow, is really a dedicated driveway. For lack of better words, it is city right-of-way, and it is a city road. But Lineage is the only party that's serviced from this segment of Chemical Way. And for those of you that may not know, Lineage Logistics is in the business of frozen food distribution. So, one of the, I guess, difficulties with the name of Chemical Way is the association it may have with the food storage and distribution business. And the recommendation that Lineage would like to have considered tonight is just renaming the stretch of Chemical Way on behalf of their business, Lineage Logistics, as they are the only person serviced by this driveway.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council, does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Longman? Hearing none. Mr. Pace, do you or Deputy City Manager Mr. Baldwin have any comments? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing on this application, SN-20-02. The public hearing is open. Madam Clerk, did we receive any comments in writing in advance of this meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. Are, do you have anybody that's queued up to speak at this public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, I'll declare the public hearing closed so that we can put this ordinance before us for our consideration for adoption this evening. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Again, this will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye; opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Ms. Semus.
Aye.
Mayor Rowe.
Aye. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we come to our next public hearing, which is Item, Agenda Item S20-01. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption and the ordinance that accompanies this matter?
Yes, sir. Victory Village, ordinance granting the request of the Portsmouth Economic Development Authority for the closure of Village Way and a portion of Corporate Drive Northwest of Freedom Drive as part of the proposed Rivers Casino Portsmouth development located between McLean Street and Victory Boulevard. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property for mixed-use employment. The property is right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. The ordinance is an ordinance to close Village Way and Corporate Drive extending northwest from Freedom Avenue and located between Victory Boulevard, Cavalier Boulevard, and McLean Street.
Thank you, ma'am. We now come to the point where we ask the applicant to explain this, and I understand that Mr. Steve Romine of Williams Mullen will represent the applicant this evening. And sir, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me, Mayor? Good evening.
We can now.
Okay.
If you would identify yourself, and you have 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, and members of the City Council. For the record, I'm Steve Romine, a local attorney with an office at 222 Central Park Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia, representing Portsmouth Gaming Holdings LLC tonight. In this matter, S2001, we're on behalf of both Portsmouth Gaming Holdings and Economic Development Authority, asking that these road closures be consummated in order to facilitate the development of the entertainment district and the casino. I think the staff report in the application is self-sufficient. We have unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, and so I would just stand by for any questions. I think the condition was that it continue to be maintained for utilities, which was acceptable to us as well. I'd like to thank the city staff for their work on this matter, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council have any questions for the applicant or his representative? Hearing none. Mr. Pace, your comments.
We do not have any comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item S20-01. Madam Clerk, did we receive any comments in advance of this public? None. Is anybody queued up to speak? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. We have before us our ordinance to put this for, officially before us for our consideration. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move adoption. Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question. Again, if you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Ms. Semus.
Aye.
Mayor Rowe.
Aye. Our next item is Agenda Item 20-296C, which is Z20-07, in public, another public hearing. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of this public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Victory Village, Stephen Romine, on behalf of Economic Development Authority, is requesting to rezone approximately 50.523 acres at the 3560 Victory Boulevard, Zero Campus Drive, Zero Victory Boulevard, Zero Village Way, 111 Campus Drive, Zero Freedom Avenue, 271 Freedom Avenue, 175 Freedom Avenue, and 3606 Victory Boulevard, from Mixed Use Employment Center to High Intensity Mixed Use for eventual use as an entertainment overlay district and casino gaming establishment. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by Economic Development Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, ma'am. And again, I understand that Steve Romine is representing the applicant and is here to explain the application. Sir, do you have the floor, and you have 10 minutes?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, again, Mayor Rowe, and members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Romine, local attorney with an office at 222 Central Park Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia, representing Portsmouth Gaming Holdings LLC in this matter, Z2007. I'd like to briefly thank all the planning staff for all their hard work on this application and support, and just to thank them for that support in the application. Tonight, on behalf of the EDA, Portsmouth Gaming Holdings, the applicant is requesting a rezoning of 50.523 acres adjacent to Victory Boulevard, and as more particularly described in the application. I'll be brief, but I do want to hit some highlights with the few minutes that I have. The applicant is the contract purchaser of the property, and it seeks to rezone the property in furtherance of the development agreement that it's entered into with the EDA dated May 26, 2020. The development agreement permits us to construct a world-class casino, hotel, and entertainment venue with onsite restaurants, retail shopping, parking, and casino gaming facilities. Those are all part of the project. The applicant is related to and affiliated to Rush Street, who is a national developer of casino projects with more than 20 years of experience in the gaming industry. The applicant was named the city's preferred company to develop and operate a casino in the city as permitted by the recent gaming legislation enacted by the Virginia General Assembly. The project is tentatively named the Rivers Casino Portsmouth, which relates it to four existing casinos owned and operated by the applicant and its affiliated parties under the Rivers Casino brand in Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, DePlains, Illinois, and Schenectady, New York. The project is projected to generate more than $16 million in annual taxes to the city and infuse more than $200 million into the local economy. The project is expected to create 1,400 construction jobs and at least 1,200 permanent jobs in the city. The zoning ordinance allows casinos in the M U H zoning district with a conditional use permit. Casinos are not otherwise permitted in the city. The property is currently zoned MXEMP as a remnant of the Victory Village development that was never realized. The applicant seeks to rezone the property tonight from MXEMP to the M U H district to permit development of the project. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan because it furthers the economic, cultural, and development objectives of the comprehensive plan by permitting the development of a unique destination attraction that will create well-paying jobs in the community, reinvigorate local businesses with increased tourism, serve as an anchor attraction for development of the surrounding area, and generate substantial tax revenue for the city. The project is also consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map because the property is designated as a mixed-use employment district and located in an employment redevelopment area. The casino will generate and support jobs directly and indirectly for years to come, thereby satisfying the future intended use of the property as an employment generator for the city. The applicant has conducted extensive traffic impact studies and identified needed road improvements to support the rezoning and the project. The applicant will make such necessary road improvements as required by the Virginia Department of Transportation's 527 study. Once improved, the surrounding roads will be more than sufficient to support the onsite uses associated with the project. The applicant respectfully requests the City Council approve its application to rezone the property at M U H so it can apply for a conditional use permit to develop and operate a casino on the property. I'll also mention, as earlier indicated, that the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Mr. Mayor, I will stand by for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Romine? All right, well, thank you. We're now ready to open the public hearing. And I open the public hearing on Z20-07. Madam Clerk, do we have any prefiled comments pertaining to this public hearing?
No, sir.
Do we have anybody in the queue to speak at this public hearing?
No, sir.
With that, I now close the public hearing, and we have the matter of Z20-07 on its first reading. In order for us to put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
Turn me.
Move for adoption. Second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and duly seconded to approve this zoning request. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye; if you're opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Ms. Semus.
Aye.
Mayor Rowe.
Aye. And Madam Clerk, this motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're now at Agenda Item Z20-06. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of this public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Downtown Jim Bento of Fairly Integrated is requesting to rezone approximately 2.4 acres located at Zero Harbor Center Court from downtown D1 T6 Sub-District to Conditional Industrial in order to expand the adjacent ship manufacturing and repair facility. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Economic Development Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval with proffers.
Thank you, ma'am. I understand that Mr. Jim Bento is here on behalf of the applicant. And Mr. Bento, you have 10 minutes to explain your application.
Mr. Rowe, this is Fred Passman, President of Fairly. Can you hear me?
I sure can.
Good evening, sir. I'm with Mr. Bento to present this.
Okay.
And so, good evening to you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, Mayor-elect Glover, and members of council. Thanks for allowing Mr. Bento and me the opportunity to present this. I believe you have the staff report in front of you that was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. And I just wanted to briefly bring attention to two of the elevations that are presented in front of you. And I want to take the opportunity to thank you for the entire process because during the planning process, we did receive some constructive feedback from Councilman Semus on the importance of the aesthetics of this building. And with this being the barrier between what was, what is the industrial area and what is a recreational area, we had only, at that time, proposed the tree line on the north elevation with no mural. And it was through this recommendation that we extended the tree line to the west elevation and added the mural to both the north and west elevations. So, that was done, and we just are excited about this. We have invested $13 million into the Wavy Street facility since purchasing the facility in 2018. And we just would like to ask if you have any questions for either myself or Mr. Bento and Jim. If there's anything you'd like to add, please do so.
All right. I'll ask my colleagues, do they have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Mr. Pace.
We're good. I would just make one note on the proffers and the proffers with this project, for the most part, mirror the proffers for the recent rezoning they did at the Ocean Marine property next door.
Thank you. We're ready for the public hearing, and I now open the public hearing on Z20-06. Madam Clerk, do we have any prefiled comments?
No, sir.
Do we have any persons in the queue to speak on this matter?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I close the public hearing. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to approve this application. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye; opposed, voting nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle.
Nay.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Ms. Semus.
Aye.
Mayor Rowe.
Aye. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries on its first reading.
Yes, sir.
It'll be back at our next meeting for final adoption. Our next public hearing is Z-20-08. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of this public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Uptown, the city of Portsmouth is requesting to rezone approximately 250.2 acres of 541 parcels in the D2 Uptown. traditional zoning districts in accordance with the D 2 district proposed zoning map. The city is also proposing D 2 innovation overlay district to be superimposed on the new zoning districts. For the D 2 uptown area, the property is designated on the future land use map in the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan as various designations, including commercial, institutional, public, multifamily residential, mixed-use corridor, light industrial, and heavy industrial. The property is owned by numerous owners. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, ma'am. And the city of Portsmouth is the applicant, this case. And in this regard, I'll call upon Deputy City Manager and Director of Planning, Bob Baldwin, to explain the application.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe. And good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of council. I'll be relatively brief tonight. We went through a pretty extensive briefing at your meeting back on the 10th, I believe. And I don't need to belabor all of those questions. What you see in front of you here is the proposed zoning map. And as we had indicated before, we followed the initial work from the MDC plan that was done during the Build 1 Portsmouth process, and we have since revised that through staff analysis, through our town hall meeting with property owners, and a number of various conversations with interested parties out there. As noted in the caption, we also propose in the innovation overlay district, which we would move forward with city council's approval during the FY '21 budget cycle to further refine the land use planning for this area and move towards a more cohesive land use strategy and a place-making strategy, as well as we discussed at your last meeting. Next slide, please. And I do want to make one more comment. You know, one of the issues that has come up with this property, as you've heard from Mrs. White when she was reading the caption for this item, the large number of zoning districts that were, or land uses that were referenced in the comprehensive plan just gives you an idea of the complexity of the history of this district from its pre-form base code days through its form base code days and then to what we're proposing for city council to consider tonight. And we want to make you aware that there's, you know, obviously a concern that was developed during the form base code timeframe about creation of non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures. And once again, just wanted to assure council that within the proposed revisions to the zoning ordinance, we provided a number of processes to help property owners move through processes related to non-conformities in a much more flexible manner than what is sort of traditional in zoning ordinance, is to try to minimize, if not eliminate, all the situations that we encounter with non-conformities in its current zoning category. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions you might have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Baldwin? With that, I will open the public hearing on C 20 dash oh eight. And Madam Clerk, do we have any prefiled comments on this public hearing? Do we have any persons in the queue wanting to speak at this public hearing? With that, I now close the public hearing. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve or adopt?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded to adopt this matter. Any discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. If you're opposed, nay, when your name is called on this roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simms?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. And Madam Clerk, this matter carried?
Yes, sir.
It'll be on its second reading at our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
We're now at public hearing C A dash 20 dash oh two. And this, too, is on its first reading. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption for this public hearing?
Yes, sir. Item F, citywide, city of Portsmouth is proposing to repeal City Code Chapter 40.1 zoning ordinance and replace it with City Code Chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance, which is a comprehensively-written zoning ordinance designed to improve clarity and ease of use, streamline development regulations, ease non-conforming situations, protect existing neighborhood character, ensure compatibility with code of Virginia, and increase consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, ma'am. I stated this is the applicant, is the city of Portsmouth, and the Portsmouth City Council started this process early in 2017. And we directed the city manager and the staff to make sure that we had a comprehensive strategy for involving citizens, as we welcomed and wanted their input right from the very start. And so, this is the culmination of almost a four-year process of city staff and citizens' involvement to get us to where we are. Because the city is the applicant, I'll call upon Deputy City Manager and Director of Planning, Bob Baldwin, to explain this application.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe. And once again, good evening, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke and members of council. And certainly my pleasure, after a very long process, to bring the draft rewritten zoning ordinance for city council consideration public hearing this evening. And once again, I'll attempt to not restate too much of what we went over at your last meeting when we went through the long work session to walk you through, the way the ordinance have been restructured, rewritten. I'm just going to take one moment, but thank all the members of the city staff who worked on this project, in particular Meg Pittenger and Julie Chop from the Planning Department, and certainly Jeff Miller from the City Attorney's Office. This has been a long process, and we're certainly glad to get to this point. I'll point out here, the slide you have in front of you is the one we showed at the work session. It's really the sort of organizational setup of the new zoning one. It's much more streamlined, and we believe it's going to be much more user-friendly for all, including the city staff, developers, property owners. We believe it's a much more manageable approach to zoning within the city, and I think it gives us a good step to go forward with future development in the city. Next slide, please. I did want to follow up on your comments, Mayor Rowe, when you started this with the process we followed. I'm just going to spend a little bit of time talking about that before I get to the end here tonight. And as you mentioned, we did have the 2017 city council resolution. And as you may recall, we were in the middle of the city's comprehensive plan rewrite at the time when this task came out. And we initially worked with the Berkeley Group to do a review of that, of the ordinance that was in place, our current ordinance. And we were really looking for all the issues, inconsistencies, state code questions, and a lengthy review project was done out of that project, and report was posted on our webpage. It's still there for anyone who would like to go back and look at it. It gives you sort of the comprehensive look we took. We initiated this process. And then, obviously, there were some issues that were kind of burning at the time we were going through. So we were having issues with parking being an impediment to some of those more significant development redevelopment projects that were being proposed at the time. So we also, in 2017, rewrote the parking section. One of the things we took out of that was there was a cap in there, a parking maximum that was causing problems. And we rewrote the parking requirements to lower the parking requirements overall. Then in 2018, of course, we had to rewrite the sign ordinance. That was done because of the Supreme Court case, and we got that completed and done 2018. And then, you know, while we were having joint work sessions with city council planning, which we had a number of those pre-COVID days, 2017, 18, 19, working through some of these issues, and members of council, many of you may remember some of the sessions, including the work we went through on the use table portion of the zoning ordinance itself. In January, we took what we'll call a rough draft. We wanted to give a sort of an unvarnished version of the reconfigured zoning ordinance, put it out for public comment, really almost beta testing, as some people have used that phrase, of what we were working on. And we got a number of public comments, which we reviewed each and every one of them and incorporated many into the current version you have before you tonight. And then also, at the request of the city council, we went to all of our boards and commissions at the planning department, provide staff support to, including the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, Historic Preservation Commission, Downtown Design Committee, and took feedback from them, comments from them. And they were also very helpful and providing assistance during that early part of the process. Next slide, please. So, again, moving forward, we got into that January-through-March part. We were working on the rewrite, taking in public comment. And then, as we had noted in some of our earlier briefings, we wanted to go back and look at some of the ordinances that people may not realize are also part of our overall zoning program for the city, including our Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, which is an overlay to the zoning. The city's flood regulations are also an overlay or an overlay district really for the, to the zoning ordinance. And then we did that comprehensive plan compatibility analysis. Obviously, the General Assembly this year had an extended session, kind of pushed our schedule back a little bit while they were completing work, some of it being related to the casino. We were finally able to get through the General Assembly-related amendments and get those incorporated in the ordinance back in July. At that time, we provided the draft to the City Attorney's Office for a complete formal legal review, which was completed during the month of August. We completed our final draft rewrites and posted the rewrite back up on our webpage. We certainly put out public notice, working through the city's marketing department and other venues to let people know the draft was posted up there back in September. And we, again, left that up there for public comments. That has been followed up during October, November, where we made presentations to the Planning Commission, city council, and actually went back to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Historic Preservation Commission, Downtown Design Committee to advise them of the changes and modifications that occurred subsequent to our initial meetings with those boards back in October. We did our planning town hall on that D 2 rezoning. That was the one part of the city that city council asked us to actually make a zoning map change on. We did, in addition to direct mail out to all the property owners, we also did public outreach for that, took in comments, some suggestions from that, which led us to the final draft, which you have before you this evening. That went to the Planning Commission back on their meeting on the 17th. The Planning Commission has, in fact, conducted a public hearing and recommended approval. And with that, the rewritten ordinance is coming before city council this evening.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were you finished, Mr. Baldwin?
Well, I just want to make one comment. If we go back to that last slide that we had up. And just to show that we've sort of got a continuation of work that's been related to this process. So, once we get to the part where city council does a final adoption of the zoning ordinance, we'll continue our work on the development procedures manual. And we have, you know, been working with the idea that we need to have a more user-friendly, public-available electronic zoning map, which we'll be working on. A lot of work, which we started during the current COVID pandemic in terms of being more virtual, we're continuing to work on allowing more electronic submission, probably a streamlined version of the staff report. And then we'll move into the D 2 district that you just voted first reading on, to work on the master plan for the innovation overlay district and the place-making strategy. And then finally, we'll come back and take another look at the D 1 district and see if we need to update any of the district standards for the D 1 downtown district. And that does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the floor up for questions, and I see that two have asked before. Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke, I'll call on you first, and then Councilwoman Simms. Lisa, you have four.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilwoman Simmons was first, if she prefers to go first.
That's fine.
Thank you. One comment and two questions. First of all, I do recall, as many of you do, when we started this, I remember jokingly saying, "I hope we'll finish this before the end of my term." And, Mr. Baldwin, we're cutting it awful close. But thank you and your staff for a lot of hard work in getting to this point. I know y'all have done yeoman duty getting to this. But I do have two questions. The first is, you also received a copy of a letter today electronically from a local developer who may be late to the party on this comment, but I'm just curious on your comment. He was talking about our single-family URM lot size this week, pick 5,000 versus 6,000 square feet, with keeping the 50-foot width on the top, across the front. Do you have any comment on his suggestion there to be more compliant with our neighboring cities?
Well, I have a couple of comments. First of all, if you recall, probably maybe a year ago, city council asked us to put together a patch for the current zoning ordinance because you're receiving complaints about some of these smaller lot infill projects. And this is exactly the kind of lot configuration, this, in some cases smaller, that was coming about. So we did an analysis at that time, which we did for the patch. We followed that up during the rewrite project, went back and looked at it again. I believe you also had some public comments at an earlier meeting along the same question about some of these smaller lots for these infill things. One of the things we've concluded, having looked at the history of the zoning and some of the neighbors enforcement, and that is, you know, we're trying to come up with zoning, which infill development is compatible with the existing neighborhoods, not just driven by a market for smaller lots. And I think because of these smaller lots generate a lot of parking problems, and some of these larger homes sitting next to smaller homes, where these larger homes are towering on them, or the homes get taller because they're on smaller lots, we think that does create a fair amount of potential incapability between the existing neighborhood and some of these new homes being built. So we'd be more than willing to go back and take, you know, another look at this going forward. We're pretty comfortable that we think the lot sizes that were proposing this meet the direction that was given to us by city council to protect the existing neighborhoods.
That's all I need to hear. Because I know we didn't like, and I agree wholeheartedly, that some of this infill was getting too squished up beside existing properties, and we're not Chesapeake and Virginia Beach with lots of new housing developments being built. So thank you for that. I'm glad I asked. My second question is, I have had a handful of folks come up to me just in the last 10 days, two weeks, who are interested in pursuing small businesses in the Port Norfolk Historic District, a bakery, a restaurant, a coffee shop, and they're all telling me they're hitting roadblocks on parking. Do we have parking requirements? I'm sure I could read 422 pages and answer this myself, but can you tell me about the parking requirements in Port Norfolk, and should we look at it more like Old Town? I hate to be prohibiting small businesses.
Oh, that's a great question.
These really are small businesses.
Yes, that's a great question. And whether we're talking about-
I'm sure I could read 422 pages and answer this myself, but can you tell me about the parking requirements in Port Norfolk, and should we look at it more like Old Town? I hate to be prohibiting small businesses.
Oh, that's a great question.
These really are small businesses.
Yes, that's a great question. Whether we're talking about, you know, Port Norfolk or Parkview, obviously, some of these older, especially this historic district, we do run into some of these questions about parking. In recent years, we try to address a fair amount of that between either onsite, on street. But I will tell you, I do think we are, and we did not do that, I'll be perfectly frank during this process, but I think we are due for a reassessment of parking within districts such as Port Norfolk, working with the community a bit on that, and see what we can do to come up with some variations to the parking that might allow some of this infill-type development to go forward. We really didn't do a lot of modification to what's in the current historic districts because there wasn't much done in the 2010s. So you're really seeing sort of the historic carrying forward of what's sort of historically, I hate to use that phrase, but, you know, been the case for these districts. But I do think it is a timely question, and we'd be more than willing to go back and take a look at the parking in districts, in particular in Port Norfolk, because we've heard the same questions being posed.
Yeah. And I mean, I recall, and you will too, from your first time around here, we had a bakery, we had a restaurant on Detroit, and a hair salon, and all these other things. And then they went dark, and now that people want to put small businesses back into some of those buildings, they can't, for lack of meeting a parking requirement.
Right. And clearly, you know, we can take a look at that. I understand, we could take a look at that. Obviously, a lot of that parking demand is met on-street. And the way the current code works is we defer to the city engineering department for whether or not the on-street parking is safe and appropriate to meet the use. But we'd be more than willing to go back and do that, and I think that's a valid question for us to go back and investigate further.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, thank you. Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Baldwin, I want to applaud you and your staff and the planning commission for all of the hard work that is done and the extra efforts that you've taken to go to the board of zoning appeals and the historic preservation commission, and even coming back to us to help reinforce our hearing and our understanding of it. During the last planning commission, I know that there was a citizen comment on about some of the complexity of the zoning changes are not easily understood. And I know that, you know, everyday citizen hearing this for the first time, it can be kind of overwhelming, but I do believe that the book that you have produced, with the multiple pages to go through, will be helpful for citizens to take a look at it. I mean, I like the front part with all of the definitions and the codes of everything, you know? You get through that, that's half of the understanding right there, but, you know, don't want any citizen to feel like they're left behind. So I know that your office will be user-friendly in helping our citizens, some of our businesses, and some of our developers to navigate through this process. I think it's going to be well worth the wait that we have started along this process. So applaud you. Thank you for helping us to get through it, and I'm looking forward to the other side of what it's going to bring for our businesses here in Portsmouth.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? Here and none. I will now open the public hearing on CA 20-02. And Madam Clerk, do we have any prefiled comments on this matter?
No, sir.
Do we have any persons waiting in the queue to speak at this public hearing?
No, sir.
Thank you. With that, I now close the public hearing on CA 20-02, so that we can consider this matter on its first reading. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
Sir, a second. Good. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion on this matter? Here and none, we're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. If you're opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye.
We now come to unfinished business, item 20-272, use permit rezoning. This is the consent agenda. Within the consent agenda, we have four items, and without dissent, we'll consider them as a block. And with that, Madam Clerk, read the caption for all four items, and we'll consider the adoption of the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Item A, resolution granting a use permit, UP 20-06, to Capital Growth Bulk Halter, to construct and operate approximately 2,300 square foot restaurant with drive-through on a portion of 1817 Frederick Boulevard. Item B, resolution granting a use permit, UP 20-06, to Capital Growth Bulk Halter, to construct and operate approximately 2,300 square foot restaurant with drive-through on a portion of 1817 Frederick Boulevard. Item C, resolution granting a use permit, UP 20-08, to Capital Growth Bulk Halter, to construct and operate an approximately 3,967 square foot restaurant with drive-through on a portion of 1817 Frederick Boulevard. And D, zoning amendment ordinance, Z 20-04.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can put this matter before us for its final adoption, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda and these four items?
Move for adoption.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Here and none, we're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. Opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye.
And Madam Clerk, this matter passes?
Yes, sir.
The consent agenda.
Yeah.
With that, we're at city manager's report, item 20-297, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a bulletproof vest partnership program grant in the amount of $11,355 from the U.S. Department of Justice, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2021 Grants Fund budget for use by the Portsmouth Police Department and the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move adoption.
Sir, a second. Good. Any discussion on the ordinance, meaning on the motion? Here and none, we're ready for the question. Again, if you're in favor of the motion, please vote aye. If you're opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye.
We're now at item 20-298, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an opioid response prevention award in the amount of $35,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2021 Grants Fund for use by the Department of VHS to address opioid misuse.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? With that, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. Opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye.
Our next item is item 20-299, which is the consideration, the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and re-ordain Article 4 of Chapter 24 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, gambling by amending Section 24-131 definitions and adding sections 24-140 and 24-141 for the purpose of authorizing the activities of licensed casino gaming establishments and licensed betting platforms.
Thank you. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Sir, a second.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Good. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none, we're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. Opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye.
And Madam Clerk, this motion carries?
Yes, sir.
We're now at item 20-300, which is the consideration, the adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution certifying Rush Street Gaming LLC and its affiliate Portsmouth Gaming Holdings LLC as the preferred casino gaming operator for the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Move for adoption.
Sir, a second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for discussion, and we have one registered speaker, and that's Mark Kudalgie Yatroski. And, sir, you have the floor.
There's a saying that when somebody wants to do something in the worst way, they generally succeed. And I consider the way that we have gone about selecting a preferred provider for the casino is the worst way. It came through a solicitation through the city attorney. The city attorney is no longer here. And there was no competitive bid process by which you could evaluate a variety of offers, look at what everybody was putting on the table, and make a selection from among the bidders. Instead, somebody got a fast track. And that somebody has made representations about what it is the city will receive in terms of benefits. I received during the election season at least five different glossy flyers naming $10 million in proceeds from sale of the land, $16 million in new taxes, and 1,300 new jobs. Well, in earlier business tonight, that 1,300 jobs shrank by 100 to 1,200, and I'm wondering over time, what of the other benefits that we're supposed to derive will also shrink as we come closer to the point. So my suggestion to you, my recommendation to you, is that you defer this item, you put out an RFP, and receive competitive bids before you finalize the selection of preferred provider. I would like the city, although I opposed this, if the city is going to go into the casino business with a partner, I'd like the city to receive the maximum benefit possible from that partnership. And I'm not sure that this mode of selection that you engaged in is going to give us that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the part of council? Here and none, we're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. If you're opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye.
And Madam Clerk, this motion carries?
Yes, sir.
We come to item 20-301, which is the consideration of the adoption of another resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the city manager to release easements and other property interests of the city of Portsmouth in furtherance of the proposed entertainment district development.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none, we're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the passage of this motion, please vote aye. If you're opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye.
We come down to new business, item 20-302, the consideration appointed appointments to boards and commissions, and the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I approve that the following reapportments to our boards and commissions be approved. I'll read the list. Economic Development Authority, Malcolm Mitchell, Barbara Smith. Planning Commission, Donna Coleman, Sherry Thaxton. Historic Preservation Commission, Thomas Butt, Chris Crowder. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Kendra Robison. Clifford King Harbin. Southampton Roads Disability Services Board, Lisa Kidd, and Dr. Lydia Simmons.
Thank you. Sir, a second. Is sir a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
The fanfare.
Any discussion on the question that's before us? Here and none, we're ready for the question. And if you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. If you're opposed, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you vote? May, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye.
We come to items submitted by council members. We have any items? We come to report on, yes, sir, the chair recognizes Councilman Bill Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, a few weeks ago, when we were discussing our legislative package, I brought up an item in our charter, 3.11, and we tasked our interim city attorney to do some research on how our charter provision, 3.11, which is non-interference of appointments or resignations.
3.11, which is non-interference of appointments or resignations, how it compares with other cities. We all received a copy of that. I think the item that stood out in our charter language versus some of our sister cities is the provision of Class III misdemeanor and removal from office. We've had recently a judge that, I think rightly so, disregarded that provision. I would like to see this council bring our charter provision in line with our sister cities in that regard. And I thought we had a discussion on it. I don't know that we specifically called for consensus to edit the appropriate language change to our legislative package. I guess our attorney would need to craft that, but I feel it's something that needs to be done. I think it's very heavy-handed. Those things don't happen often, but I think ours is probably the most onerous of all the cities.
If I understand what you're asking, you're asking council to consider removing the penalty section of the...
Absolutely.
Okay, which is... What's the consensus of council? We could ask the city attorney to bring back the draft language. There's also, we need to ask the city attorney to spell out the process for charter amendments. My recollection is, is that you either have to have a referendum or a public hearing on the matter. And so we could task, if there's no dissent, the city attorney, along with the city manager, to not only bring back the language that captures what Councilman Moody talked about tonight, but also the process for the introduction of a charter bill. Any dissent on that?
Concur.
Okay. Hearing that, there's no dissent.
I do have a question. What kind of enforcement procedures would you be in favor of, Councilman Moody? A civil type or any enforcement, or just a general statement?
I think just a general statement. I think some of our sister cities, as I recall, didn't have any specific enforcement other than a general statement that, you know, council members aren't allowed to do that under our charter.
How about if I present a few choices to city council as to what some of the other cities do? Some do have some civil penalties, some have, I think, maybe a reprimand or something of that nature. I can, I don't have the chart in front of me from the research that was done, but I'll be happy to present, you know, some options, and city council can agree on that. Take one of the options.
Yeah, and you might, Burl, you might want to redistribute the work that two of your attorneys did on that. It was a pretty comprehensive comparison. And from that, we can decide as a council what we want.
Okay. And I think I'm seeing everybody kind of nod that having the alternatives, everything from no language as to what the consequence is, to whatever the alternative might be. Am I making sense?
Yes, correct, Mayor. I believe that all of the criminal charges should be removed from that. And if any count of reprimand, maybe just a fine. But to be criminally charged and removed from office for an interference where citizens vote and vote you to have a voice, to use your First Amendment speech, to make your interest and their interest known, I believe there's a conflict in that information. And my recommendation, I didn't get it back after I saw what interim city attorney, Burl Stromberg, put out, and I really appreciated that information because when I was asking around, just from my own personal knowledge, no other colleagues in any other cities were up against any of that type of language. And it is a 1970 code. It's about old as I am. And I think it's time for us to be proactive in how we look at information where we are charged to lead our city and to provide a voice of reason and responsibility and leadership. So, Mr. Stromberg, I applaud you and your team for the work that you did provide to us. And I thought we would make one of those choices based on the information that you provided. I suggest moving all criminal charges and the removal from office and maybe just leave a fine.
Okay, we'll look at it. I want to give credit to Jeff Miller and Kelsey Swanga of our office who did most of that research.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely. That was some great information.
I recommend that it be as simple as possible. We have many prohibitions in the charter that shall not do this, shall not do that. And so as we look at the alternatives, we might be reminded to keep it simple. Any further discussion on this matter? I think we have unanimous consent.
I had my hand up again.
Sir, I'm sorry, I did not, for some reason, there you are. You must have your camera off.
No, sir.
Okay, well, you're, I can see you now.
Well, I really would appreciate if you allowed me to keep my monies in reference to erring, you know, in city business.
Sure.
Please come back with something that's going to allow me to keep my money, sir.
That's a good point.
Very good point.
Mayor, could this be brought back to council at our next meeting?
That was the intent.
Okay.
I thought, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Any other items? A report on pending items, Mr. Pace?
Mayor, there are no pending items.
And we now come to non-agenda speakers. And we have two, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Ma'am?
It should just be one.
It should be one?
That's, you might have an old sheet. It was updated. It's only one. Mr. Kadalgie-Giatroski.
Okay. With that, we're now at non-agenda speakers, and our first speaker is Mark Kadalgie-Giatroski. And, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and neighbors. This pandemic has taken its toll, not only in lives and jobs and feelings of security, but it's taken a toll on democracy as well, nationally and in our city of Portsmouth. The lag between the time council started meeting virtually and the time that citizens had an opportunity to express themselves directly before council and before the viewing public was several months, despite the fact that it didn't require any major technology change to bring that into being. The limitation of speaking times in virtual meetings for citizens, where the pre-existing limit was five minutes and has been for quite a while, and when it's been restricted, citizens have come together before council and during election seasons to assert that the five-minute rule is what needs to be in place. Council on bringing the public into the virtual meeting in real time immediately dropped the speaking limit. It's no easier to speak in this fashion than it is to speak in public. And there was no reason given for making that change. I note that those people who are presenting applications before council related to planning items still have 10 minutes. I don't see why the public is disadvantaged in this fashion. But I expect it's falling on deaf ears. You all have had your way and are probably concerned in your opinion that this is what you want done. It is my hope that when the new council is seated, this will be looked at again, and the five-minute rule will be restored. The fact that people cannot come up in a group in this particular mode and rise in the council chamber or rise online in support of a speaker is a great disadvantage to democratic process. And I don't have a workaround for that. But I hope that, again, the new council will look for ways to bring back some modicum of democracy to these proceedings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have completed the agenda. Our business is done tonight. I wish all, everyone that is seeing this broadcast a very happy Thanksgiving, but most importantly, a safe Thanksgiving. Show your love for your neighbor. Wear a mask. This meeting is adjourned.